No, I talked to Bob about it. It's gonna happen.
Who's doing it?
Bob.
Oh, he's getting them and...
Well, he didn't say he wasn't, but he said he was working on it, so.
Okay.
It is 6:30, so a call to hold of the May 6th meeting of Rollinsford Select Board. First order of business, if approved, will commence from April 29th meeting. Are there any edits or corrections or anything folks have?
Nope.
So by consensus, we'll pass the April 29th minutes, so we're community input. Gentlemen, I believe you're here to talk to us, right? Why don't you come on up?
My name's Jim Walcott. I'm from Dover in Carlton Spencer. Once from Rollinsford, but now he's from Somersworth. He wants to come back. So I, without having a lot of wisdom, I brought this along on Shady Lane. We're just looking for a little bit of guidance. We thinking about coming back? Or is it to the plan of what it's starting all over again? Because we don't know what happened the first time. But we're just trying to find a way for Mr. Spencer to build a house here and be able to, I know we need a variance from the zoning board to have a house building permit issued on a private road, a classic road. And also about the definition of a road being a classics, I believe. I can't remember. We're just finding all this stuff out. Anyway, I'm just seeing if there's anything we have input before we hit the zoning board. You know, basically, we want to keep it as a classics. Maybe there's only more to let us do a driveway or a classics gravel driveway. We're not sure, but is there anything here that jumped out of anyone still on the board from back in 2017?
Like a bad penny.
That's what I heard. I've been reading the minutes of the meeting.
I don't want to prejudice anything in the process, but this is...
Yeah, I now understand that.
Sort of a bane of my existence in the time of the planning board and on the slate.
I went to the registry and I was told I could just start a roads. I went to registry and pulled the plans. It was recorded. I'd never seen a plan that was conditional recorded before, and it threw me for a loop. And I, so I just bought it, and I probably definitely shouldn't have.
Well, I can't tell you your business, but anyway, someone may have given you some bad information. So I don't know. You wouldn't need to go to the planning board and talk to them. I can tell you, though, that select boards don't have to issue building permits, even if you go through the ZBA and the play. That's why I wanted to set this from the beginning.
Oh, no, we realize it could be turned down.
So you can go through, it could be a very, very expensive process. And you could then, because by the time you finally finish with all the process, none of us may even still be sitting here. It could be a whole new board, I mean, believe it or not. It could be very lengthy. And even then, they could just say, no, sorry, we don't issue building permits on classics roads in general. We've had a couple in town that have happened over, I mean, they're talking like decades ago, when they didn't have any process in place. We have a set of guidelines that we would use if we, if you went through all the entire process and we thought it was a project that met certain criteria that are outlined in those guidelines. But there's nothing to hold this board or the next board to those guidelines, because they're just truly guidelines set up.
They're not law.
But they're not law, right? There's not an ordinance, so.
Yeah, I did print out those.
I don't want to mislead you. I also don't want, I mean, I understand it's an expensive investment, and I don't want to mislead anyone, but it will be a very contentious process, I think. Is a fair way to put it. I think I've never seen so many people turn out over to a planning board meeting over something that didn't seem all that overly complicated to me, but just because of where it is.
Well, we can smooth things over, so there's no, the plan as it exists now. We could stick with something like that and then come back with a different light on the road.
So you're looking at some of the conditions.
Yeah, we just like to keep, just keep it as, right now, it looks like a driveway coming all the way down in, right? You wouldn't change too much of that. You just extend it about 70 feet to get to the lot. There's a berm here. Now we've removed the berm. Someone put a berm over here along the road.
The berm can't stay there.
Right. It should be there anyway, but the town doesn't maintain it as a classic road.
We would take that out. I mean, he's just looking to extend and go to here now. So he just needs to get down another about 70 to 100 feet to be able to get access to the lot. And more like a driveway situation, we could do improvements for, you know, emergency vehicles and those type of things, creating turnarounds on the lot. Doing things that I know is a concern for the planning board after reading the minutes. But it's just more like, I think the only thing that could change is a mail walk down here.
I thought there was a discussion after the approval to not pave it. At that point, it left the planning board. The previous select board didn't really want to see it paved.
Right.
That doesn't mean this board does, because it was... Have you gotten on at that point yet? It was a multi-year process. This was not a, this was not a want and done kind of meeting. This was very contentious.
I didn't like to watch your tapes on here.
Very, very contentious, so. I'm hesitant to give you any kind of advice or...
I'm pretty, you know, I'm sure people will show up, but we can get the neighbors' support here.
I have the neighbors' support.
Yeah, they both, they both like the idea.
When I talk.
They like the idea of only having one house, and everyone's worried about there being a multifamily unit and building something large right here. So we'll try to get the neighbors' support here and see what we can do between now and then.
That would certainly, I would, that would help you in the planning board process, for sure. But you're gonna need to go to the ZBA and get a variance for certain things. And that was outlined, actually, I think it might be on the plan.
It just says from the letter from Attorney Rattigan, which...
Well, that was added on, but it's, you would need a variance, which is from the letter from, in Rattigan's letter, it said you need a, you need a variance for certain things. I'm trying to remember. I don't remember all the details.
They never went to the ZBA?
No, they never went. That was part of the problem.
So it's...
We would get to the, that's definitely, you need to make that application to the ZBA. And I don't know, I don't want to speak for the other folks that owned it before. I don't know why they didn't do it, but they didn't, so.
Yeah, that was just what I saw it sign, so I thought they went to the ZBA, should have run a little closer.
It would have been a lot easier for, well.
For that. So our next step is, come up with a plan, go to the ZBA, then come back and see what all the other boards have to say, I guess.
So you need to go to the ZBA first and then the planning board, right?
Well, it depends on whether or not you want to pave it or not. My understanding of the conditions is that you can work with the select board and upgrade it to class five standards, which of course is the expensive way to go.
Very expensive.
If you're willing to do that, then you don't need to go to the ZBA. The ZBAs...
Well, wanting to do that, it's just that who wants to pave this? Who wants to build a big road back there?
Well, and so this board, at the time when that was approved, preferred that it not be paved. But for it to not be paved, you would need the variance with the ZBA.
That's what we'd be going for, because we have to wait for the next town meeting to have that voted on, I believe. When you build a class five road, I believe that the town has to vote on it, because you have to get the variance.
We can, they would have to vote to accept it.
What to accept?
But we, we buy statute, lay out roads and all that, so. Which is, it can be a very expensive process.
So they would prefer a gravel, anyway, so maybe a class five road is gravel.
Oh, no, it would say...
No, class five is not gravel.
Yeah, you would say, you would need a variance, because it's prohibited from building on a class six road.
And all the neighbors definitely do not want to see a big highway down through their home.
No, and they didn't even want to see a single family house at one point, so. Quite the fight, so.
I talked to Sean, who lives in Jason's old house, and abandoned businesses, and they're all, you know, they're happy with this.
Carlton, you would be very well served. I mean, again, I don't want to give you advice on what you should or shouldn't do. But you would be very well served, what if you went to the planning board? To have those people show up and actually speak in your opinion, because they were those same, well, not the folks that bought the LaVoy's house, because they weren't there yet.
Yep.
But some of the other folks you mentioned were very, very, very loud in their opposition, let's just say.
Because they don't want that road going through and ruin the...
When with Douglas Hospital, I will say, because public record built their entrance, the main entrance to the hospital in the rear of the building, which doesn't make any sense, right? Because they wanted the town of Rollinsford to reopen that road and make it a class five road. And the town, 25 years ago or more, said, no, thanks. We didn't want that. They wanted to remain rural over there, so. And that's why a lot of folks were very upset, even with a single family home. It was, it was presented in three or four different ways to the select board at first, and then not to the planning board, a different way. It wasn't a consistent process. We would tell the applicants one thing, and they would do the opposite at times, so. It would be well-served to have an architect drawing out your plans and having someone you can trust and know.
We'll bring in the architect engineering to do it. It was just surprising. Why didn't they give a waiver to subdivide off a lot of that's non-conforming? I mean, they got a waiver for it, too. Who knows?
But it does conform with a class five road.
Yes, yeah.
Just not, it doesn't, the only hiccup is that it's not on a class five road. You wouldn't have any issues whatsoever. It's a class six.
All right, we'll do our due diligence. Appreciate the time.
And just so you know, there was one recently in the last year, on the other side of town, that was rejected. On a class six road. Not by, before it got to us, by the ZBA.
By the, yeah, the ZBA.
Yeah. So there's a mixed history. I want you to, I don't want anyone to go on this one with rose-colored glasses on.
No, this one, we've got to give a shot.
Yeah.
But their past president.
Oh, it's very well...
It's going to be a very contentious process. Not so much from the select board's perspective. We try not to be adversarial with folks who try to tell you things upfront, but... Unless something has changed dramatically over there in that neighborhood, that part of town, it may be a difficult, difficult process for you. I want you to be aware of that, that's all.
With no guarantee.
And with no guarantee in the end that you get, we'd have to, because we can't give you an opinion on something we don't know of. The exact plan, though, so it wouldn't be very useful.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sure.
All right.
Have a nice day. Anyone else here for public input? Paul, you're here for the water talk, talk, right? Alrighty, so we are going to then, we're not going to go on to please to, the chief come in? Did I see him?
Said he won't be here till 7:30.
7:30 it is. We'll do it then. And the bar chief is not here yet, but George, you are here. Sorry, you have been sitting in front of me. Come on up. Let's do this. So we believe Aaron from Paul's area is coming at 7:00. Just so you know, if you want to stick around for that part of the conversation, too. All right, so why don't you go through what you have for us first, George, and then we'll, we'll go through our list.
I don't have any.
Oh, well, then let's go through our list. That's fine. All right, so we have driveway culvert. You were here right last week, right, for that conversation?
Yes.
I think, okay, so the municipal association says not a good idea for us to do it. But there is, there is a couple of folks in town that want to talk to us about it. They may or may not come in tonight or next week, some other time, I guess, so. But it's on your dislocation, so. DES permit for Sligo Culver, that's what Aaron's going to talk to us about. Oh, come right out, Mr. President. How about that?
He must have been.
He must have, right?
Waiting outside until I heard my name.
All right, let's talk about permitting process. I hear it's getting easier, which is...
Maybe.
Maybe? That's the answer I was looking for, maybe.
So there are new rules in process.
Okay.
They have not been enacted yet, but the idea is that they will streamline the permitting process.
So do you know what stage they are when getting these rules implemented?
They have been through development and...
Have they gone to the governor's party yet?
They have not gone to governor council. I would assume that's their final stage of approval. But it's been through a series of hearings, public hearings. I think DES is now taking public input and incorporating feedback and finalizing. So our best guess is later this year, yeah.
All right.
And there's no guarantees it would change what happens for the, particularly a minor permit.
Okay.
It's more geared towards, some of our permits go in and they have a 75-day review period. And then on 74 days, you get back what's called a request for more information, which stops at DES's clock.
Oh, great.
And we have 30 days to respond, and then it's, you know, it's intended to streamline some of that and just make the process easier. For a minor permit, it doesn't usually take 75 days. It's usually quicker. And that's what we're probably dealing with on Sligo is a minor permit.
Right, right. Okay. So are there questions at this point from folks? So how will we know if it's a minor permit?
You don't really know until you get started. You start some pre-application correspondence with DES. But based on our experience, and actually, we did reach out ahead of time already, as, you know, for generic projects, to ask about, in these, with these parameters, what would it be? And it looks like likely a minor, the one wildcard, it was the same thing that we've talked about here, where we're looking at potentially replacing that structure, at least the concept was the adjacent historic parcel. As soon as you touch wetlands, a lot of other factors get pulled in, archaeology, historical. And it could just mean that there are some historic review needed, but DES has been exercising a little bit more common sense than...
Does DES then get cultural resources involved, or do they just do it all in-house, or do you have to deal with other departments?
It's the cultural resource committee, which includes historical and archaeology. So that's how that group from DOT or from DES gets pulled in, if needed. Sometimes when you're doing some minor repairs, like we're talking about here, DES, they can use common sense and say, we don't want to overreach. If we were replacing it, I would say there's no way. We're gonna have to do...
Right, we're just shoring up banks, right?
Right.
Expense would be four times as much.
Well, for sure, yeah, 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 yeah. But, okay. Now, there are some folks in town that really want to see us preserve the historic structure of the shareholders, so. There's some, sure, some credibility there.
Does this stop the process of Sligo Road? I mean, I don't know where we are in the road. This is not where we're doing our stuff.
What we're gonna do, not affecting the paving.
It's not gonna affect the paving at all? Okay. So this is the one that we've talked about last year?
Correct.
The old one that had the double...
No, no, that isn't the same one.
Oh, then tell me where it is.
This is the one that's in the gully by...
With the red house at the bottom of two hills.
It's the deepest.
Okay, so it's not the one that had the double...
They were talking about replacing that one before I came.
Oh, okay.
And that's where this whole processing and...
It was a single, it was a double lane, obviously, like most of, all of Sligo. And then we had turned down to one lane, we had Jersey barriers up. Yeah, so it's more of a bridge, really, a small bridge than culvert. It's a box, old granite box culvert from the mid-1800s, right, in the 19th century. So it's actually beautiful looking, but from underneath, but if you're into that kind of thing. It looks, it's more of a bridge than like an underground culvert, like with pipes that we've been dealing with on the other end of the road. Sligo's got lots of little hidden treasures and jewels and gems for us, for sure.
See, all we want to do is shore up the bank and get the brick grout and stuff to support it from washing out again.
So you're not doing anything with the culvert? You're just gonna shore up the bank?
I said the culvert.
And we still have to get all this...
As soon as you impact below what's called top of bank, that's wetland jurisdiction. And then even if it's not to the culvert, it's really part of the culvert that triggers it. In fact, if it was 48-inch diameter pipe or smaller, we could do a much easier process. But that, you know, like you said, it's sort of a bridge in that six to 10-foot range. It's a big culvert, bordering on bridge, so.
I mean, it's big enough where DOT or maybe with DOS, DES, I guess, suggested we go onto the DOT bridge list for other funding, because it's large enough. It just qualifies, right? It just...
So when we evaluated it, we came up with a whole range of options. One of them was replacement. And we said, if you were interested in replacing it, you could do a hydraulic report, because likely, from hydraulic standpoint and environmental standpoint, it would get greater than 10 feet, and then you would be eligible. But we also came up with some repair solutions. We were just trying to offer the town, you know, the whole range of things. So I don't want to be Aaron the condescender that wants to come in and replace your historic beautiful culvert.
No, no, but we actually made an application with DOT to get on the list, because it's gonna be many, many years before we ever come close to the top of the list for the funding.
10 plus.
The match, right, so. But this sounds like a much better option, actually, because we get to save the structure. It's not quite as expensive, so. So what is the next step? Is it a task order for you all to see what it would cost?
Yeah, there's a couple different ways we could do that. We could put together some nominal amount and do some correspondence, do whatever we can to that, and see how far we get. We can make some assumptions, assume it's a minor permit, and that there's no archaeology, there's no, you know, historic investigation. And, you know, bring it through a minor permit, and if it's something different, we can deal with it then. So however...
Because this is part of the plan for this year, George, right, so to get this worked out.
Yeah, sure, yes, if we can.
So then it will make it a two-way road again by doing that?
It is, we actually opened it back up already, so.
All right, so where's the funding coming from?
The culvert fund, right.
But we're not doing a culvert?
Well, it's still part of it.
It's culvert repair. Yes, they were shoring up the banks around the culvert.
Related, absolutely.
It's not like we're doing it like a half mile down the road. It's the shoring up of the banks is directly related to the culvert.
And the reason you need a permit is because it's culvert wetlands related.
It wouldn't be... So, trust me, we don't want to pull it out if it's not, we can't from there, so.
If DES determines it has historical and archaeological implications, does HTA handle those investigations?
We don't do archaeology. We don't do historical. We have self consultants that we work with very frequently. I have several funders right now where...
Which seems bizarre.
Yeah, historic documentation company, Rich Casella, he's excellent. They do what's either an inventory, individual inventory form, which is this amazing history, usually of the structure or the bridge or an area. And then independent archaeological consultants, they're on Portsmouth. They come in and they'll do a Phase 1A, which is really a site review. They'll say, well, this is a flat area. Native Americans could have, you know, had campsites here. So there's a likelihood that there'll be arrowheads in on things, or, you know, this is near a water body. Maybe there's an old grist mill. And then if it determined that you needed more investigation, maybe some test pits, but yeah. We have those relationships that can be done. You know, there is cost to it. It's not astronomical, but, you know, it would be above what we'll assume for the task. We'll hope that we can coordinate with DES. They'll use some common sense. That we're not impacting, archaeology usually comes into play when you're impacting areas that haven't already been impacted, been impacted, right? So if we're within the slopes of the roadway around the culvert, that stuff has all been disturbed. It's part of the culvert construction. It's usually when we're putting a new bridge, maybe off alignment, that we get in some lands that might not have been all disturbed.
Okay, well, that makes sense, then. So do we want to, do we want to ask Aaron to prepare the task orders, is that what it's called?
Yes.
For this project, then, for, to start working on this, then?
We'll have to look and see if our general services agreement is still active.
I don't know if it's...
Things probably inspired, which, that doesn't...
I think we did, but I don't know how long they go.
We might have done it for two years the last round, so we might still be current. I'll take a look.
Oh, I thought we just got one, though, last year.
I thought we did one before Suzanne left, or just after she did, but I...
Yeah, it might have been. I don't recall.
I'll have to check it.
Was it last year that we did the blowing mill review? So we might still, we might have done it for two years, so we didn't run into this, having to redo it.
So we might be in the, okay. That would be good if we are, but.
I'll take a look.
And you're also here to talk to us about wastewater, stormwater, right?
Stormwater grant opportunities. Are you, I apologize, I got back too late about that. Are you prepared to give just sort of a basic kind of overview of...
I'm prepared enough. I'm a servant for the person in our office.
Well, listen, it's okay if...
We don't mind keeping it general.
Sure.
Paul Casella is our chairman of the stormwater committee, and George and Miles and I are on that committee. So we can try to take some basic information back to the committee and decide whether or not it makes sense for us right now?
Okay. So from a high level, DES through the state revolving fund offers grants up to $30,000. They call it a loan, but it has principal forgiveness, assuming you fulfill the obligations of it.
Okay.
And this would be applicable to stormwater asset management. So for Rollinsford, we envisioned that would be an update on the locations of all your stormwater features, your catch basins, your outfalls, an assessment of the condition of those features, and then developing a capital improvement plan or a stormwater capital plan to, you know, figure out what you need to do in your system over the next 10 or 20 years or whatever the planning period is that you want to pick.
Okay. And Paul, why don't you come up and sit up there a little bit? So how well-funded is the revolving fund?
I believe it's very well-funded, so there were some, there was monies. I don't want to miss speed, but through some... I think it's some legal situations that DES has established that's funded it.
Okay.
I believe it's well-funded.
Okay.
As opposed to say, say, the state for J program that's 10 months years out.
Okay.
I don't think there's any issue, but John Jackman from our office, I can write that down as a question is, you know, is there risk if you take the loan that it doesn't, you know, you don't get your principal forgiveness?
Right. And so it is, it's a straight loan, it's not, there's no... There's nothing, there's nothing we would have to put out ahead of time?
I do not, I don't think so. I think it's...
Are there payments while you're waiting for principal forgiveness?
So I have really the question.
Well, it's helpful if you could even just ask the questions, and then we can have a follow-up conversation.
Clearly, it sounds as if it might be something that we'd have to wait for town meeting approval for, so.
And that was, my other question is about time frames. You know, that magnitude of monies is not being budgeted, doesn't make it very workable for this year. So what is the, when do these funds come into play? If we apply for it and get approved this year, when do funds come in? When do they have to get expended?
So the first step is actually, is the pre-application, and I believe that's due June 1. And that doesn't obligate the town or DES to do anything. That, if you, if your pre-application is selected, then by June 1 next year, that's when you put a formal application in. So this is actually a long process.
Okay, so we're, all right.
And then the pre-application is pretty simple. I think John filled out most of it in the email, but it gave you an idea. Some, what we thought the program would look like.
So this is something we do want to apply for right now, then? Because we wouldn't even have an answer or be ready for the next year, so.
I don't believe there's any obligation at this point.
Okay, except my concern is we're not going to spend this money until next year, because then we have to wait for, for the voters to vote on it.
Right.
So you're talking, you know, work to begin in March 2020. Will, will the state allow that?
This is their process, so they, I mean, they recognize that a pre-app, you can't act on it until the following year, so. I can get those answers. I think it...
I think timeline, like better understanding timeline, because also the MS4 permit has different applications in different years, so it would help inform what we do this year. Maybe we don't want to do something this year, because it would be part of that project next year.
Right. Well, but if it takes a full year to get, you're just getting pre-approval now, and you don't know until... You, you, you're actually well-positioned, because you're gonna have something on a warrant in March. And it can be drafted in a way that, you know, shell the town, you know, apply for and accept a grant through whatever the program is. And if you don't get it, then you don't do the project. I mean, it's pretty, but you're not gonna get a permit. You can't do the project unless you have permission, so.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have a choice. Some of this work, we're gonna be forced to do.
Right.
Year two, because right now is year one of a MS4 permit.
So then we'd have to, you'd have to add two...
Year two and three comes, and then all the work just goes, gets, ratchets it up.
Okay.
One is the stormwater assets, which is principally the outfalls and the catch basins. But it can be retention ponds and municipal assets to, you know, all that stuff. And besides that, there's another revolving fund for stormwater planning management, which is $75,000 on top of this, which is a separate program. So are you aware of that, Aaron, or is that a different field?
That's a little bit different field, but I can tell you John, John is aware. He's well-versed in that. If you want to talk about bridge funding, I know where that's the source.
Oh, yes, I can.
I know, it's not your, I appreciate your...
Would it be okay with you if we have Paul reach out to John?
Yes.
And maybe talk about scope and what is the cost for the, what the scope is that we think we need? And then maybe we can go in there.
I think that would be very helpful, and what type of timeline, too, that... So we heard what this program is, but the other grant program, see what the timeline is there and how the state can work with it.
And do we want to do both of them?
Right, maybe.
Yeah, I would say yes, because completely separate.
Okay.
The stormwater assets ties into the, you know, to the stormwater plant.
Okay.
But it sounds like it's separate. Oh, could they separate them? I don't, I don't understand why. No idea. Because EPA wants us to develop a, you know, stormwater plan by next month. And so I've been working on that and...
Thank you for bringing that on.
Almost done. And on top of that, part of the stormwater plan is illicit discharge detection and elimination plan.
Okay.
And part of that is the look at where is the outfalls, look at, particularly, you know, looking at the catch basin map.
Right.
Where's the catch basins flowing to? And, you know, at first it was simple, but then it became complicated, because some of our catch basins flow into the state catch basins. And it makes that junction a outfall, which is bad news, because in three years, we have to conduct dry weather sampling of the water pollution. So it's just like, everything is getting...
On those flagpole and put it on their new pole if you wanted to, if they wanted to do that.
I didn't see, I didn't see the names.
There's names on each flagpole.
Oh, I see, whoever donated it or whatever.
Right. So, I mean, that, we could take, cut that off and then we fasten to.
Oh, I see.
You know, whether we want to buy, buy the rest, the regular flagpole and put a regular flagpole in a, in a sleeve instead of rebuilding it, or we could build a flagpole. You know, I mean, it's a choice you guys, I mean, whoever wants to make.
I don't think we need two though, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm assuming one was for like a state flag and one for the.
If you want both.
But.
I don't know.
Who's gonna maintain the flags?
Yeah.
Well, that's the other question.
That's a very good point.
Put a flagpole up and you don't put a light on it, it's gonna be up and down every day.
So, so that's the other question. So now we know what the options are.
The gazebo is repairable.
Okay.
And without major work.
And the price was because.
And the flagpole, we could, I'm sure we could make a flagpole, you know, less than five hundred dollars by then, move and whatever you wanna do with it, but again, you gotta look at.
How does money come to work here, the gazebo?
The historical committee wants to take care of it as part of what.
They wanna pay for it?
Yeah, out of the money they're raising, so.
Awesome.
I, I, I don't know what they have, I don't remember, so we need to go, I'll bring back this information to our next meeting. At the very least, we wanna do a cleanup down there and.
But we, we get, we're gonna clean the pile up anyways, but.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what, it's on, I, I was hoping.
They're gonna.
So she'll get to remind me what it is, but.
We were gonna go blow all the lead and step out of it.
That'd be even better. That'd be even better. But I mean, there's, there's like broken chains and we wanted to look and see what it would cost.
We fixed that today already.
Oh, you did? Thank you. The grand post?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, well, then one more, they will check off a list then. There's a post missing too, I think.
Yeah, someone, yeah.
Snapped it off, I'm assuming by a plowhead and, or, you know, pushing, no, I mean, like the state pushing stuff towards the front, so, I don't know.
We usually clean it up before we mow it, so.
Yeah, we wanted to look, see how much it would cost maybe to replace that too, so. These are things that the historical committee wants to look at, and it may not be possible, I don't, but. Uh, we're doing some cemetery cleanups in town too, like this sort of cemeteries, so, and this was another one of the things, I think they sent that on, it's on Facebook or something like that. But, okay. Now the flagpole, let's get back to the flagpole. So, but here's the deal, if it's not gonna be maintained, then, if we're not gonna put a light on it, then we're not gonna do it. It's probably longer than, because we don't have everyone to put it, take it up and down every day.
Completely concur.
So.
Got the other two coming down.
You definitely should take them down if they're a hazard, for sure.
I mean, it, it looks.
They're nice one. Yeah, I saw, I was the only one here.
Yeah, cause I mean, get kids playing on it and then I could, someone could get hurt.
And the damage inside the gazebo is kids kicking up the, you can see where we kicked, it kicked out from inside, you know, the railings and.
Right. That's nice.
And how are you gonna stop that? One good thing, we didn't find any needles or anything on this little.
Well, that's a plus. Yeah, that's a good thing. Even down by the river, there wasn't anything down?
And I thought, yeah.
Okay, but that's where I imagine we'd see things.
Well, that, that's used quite heavily during the day and stuff, officially, those people.
Oh, that's good.
I've seen vehicles in there quite often.
So we're saying we're taking out the flagpoles and we're not putting up a new one?
Well, unless, unless we wanna, unless we wanna have a conversation.
It shouldn't be up where they are.
No, I agree.
They're too close to power lines and they're already falling over, so let's, let's just take them.
One broken half.
That we're in complete agreement on, we need to take it out, so.
Yep.
The question is whether or not it makes sense to, um, to erect them further up.
So, so where else in town do we have flags flying? Here, the fire station?
In the fire station.
Well, the, the.
That are housed.
Fire station.
It's not actually on the fire station, it's like.
Well, the fire station has their own, but isn't there one in the, in the park?
Is there one in Morton Park?
Kind of home.
Something that.
In front of a monument, I don't.
In front of the, I thought it was. I might be wrong. I, I don't know.
I can't remember now.
No, I can't remember now.
I don't remember now, I think it's just the monument.
You know, the ones in the ground. I thought it was one there.
If there is one, then it's illuminated by the streetlights, I would imagine. There isn't one, like an actual light on it, but I don't think there is one there, though.
Maybe not.
Let's ask the Google machine.
No, that's, no.
Let's see, Morton Park, wrong answer. We'll see right now.
So the fire station has them right at the end, but a door of their own and they take care of that.
All right.
And we, we put one on a building, but.
This, all the post office have their own.
I was at it all the time. I was at it randomly, just lights their own, security lights, so. Not on a regular pole.
This one here.
And that's the only one we know, we really maintain.
Mm-hmm.
I would just question, how many flagpoles do we, do we need? I mean, it's, it's a nice idea, I think it was in the spirit of the bicentennial, but. Not to be anti-patriotic.
But the problem is, who's gonna take care of it?
Exactly, that's the bigger problem.
More town wants to have it, it's on us.
I don't have a picture of it.
Maybe it doesn't. I mean, on.
There's no picture of the park one, sorry. There's a fire station, I'll take it back. Let's see, we can do it. Yeah, there's one.
Yeah, there is one there.
A big old flagpole and right next to a cannon, so there you go, there is one there. But there does not appear to be a light.
But the Legion takes care of that, right?
Talking about the one across the street.
That's, yeah, that's one.
Because you're talking about the little park with.
We are.
The plaque right to the right.
Oh, 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 no, that one is, that was, yeah, no, that was, um. The guy who used to be Santa down at the Legion, they're the ones that, they did that. Are you talking about the rock on the other side?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was, you know, yes.
Hmm.
And they, something there and they planted a tree, I thought, right?
But there's no, um.
Yeah.
There's no light. It must be, uh, must be, there must be a street light, like right by it.
I, I don't think there's a flag consistently flying there. I think it's only.
That may be too, I don't know. Well, when Google took the picture.
Oh, there was.
Overcast day and there was a flag.
Why?
Oh, whatever. So, yeah, there is one there and there's one, um, obviously in front of the town hall. There's one in the fire station.
I mean, I think if there is a desire, we should budget for it for next year.
Well, we can also talk to the historical committee and see if that's something that they want to, if they prefer then instead to pay for the, uh, putting up the flagpole. We have to figure out how they're gonna illuminate it, so. It may be a non-starter.
Now, there is power in that gazebo.
There's also lights that illuminate the, the sign that say welcome to Seven Falls Village.
So don't, you know, it just has a spotlight on it, right?
Yeah.
That's all you have.
So you need, yeah, so there is power.
But it shouldn't be difficult, then, if you've got power there already.
No, that's what I mean, that's what I mean, if they're gonna do it, you could actually put a light right on the gazebo facing the flagpole.
Right, so then it's not really, it's a, it's a non-issue then. So what do you think, five hundred dollars, you said?
No, you could make a pole, you could put, make a pole up and get a pole up to five hundred. I, I, and I'm, I think I'm high.
Or, because you just have to pay for the pipe, right? It can't be that much.
Basically, what it is, and the cement.
Pulley on the end and the cement.
Put it down.
Fabricated little pulley system and rope. Make sure it's high enough up so the kids aren't untieing it.
I can be handled.
If it's that simple, then why not keep it? But if it's bicentennial park, you should probably have a flagpole, and it's celebrating the bicentennial.
But we don't have to do it, we can do it next year.
We don't have to do it this year.
We can take those down and still, we can wait and do the budget after.
I'll, I'll make a note and check for the historical committee at their next meeting. So, but in the meantime, they need to come down. The pipe themselves have to come down. So no one gets hurt.
Just be careful.
And if we disconnect the gas, and don't allow.
Power lines, please.
Won't be an issue.
They may say, yes, this is something that they would like to instead fund that, I don't know.
But I honestly believe they don't belong where they are, so.
Well, I'm assuming those were there before that power line was, was there?
Cause I don't know.
It's just kinda weird that they have it down a, a dirt road, that they don't even see it.
Yeah, it's a boat launch, right, it's not watched.
It doesn't, this doesn't make any sense.
You can't see it from the road, I mean.
No. No.
There's not two different parks there, right? There's just, the front is bicentennial park, right?
Well, what do they call the boat launch, though? Is that called something?
I don't know, somebody said something about millennium, there's no millennium park in Rome, is there?
Isn't that down in the.
Yeah, and it's G E Field.
No, but there's, um.
Usually G E Field, now it's.
Yeah, yeah, right, up, up of a stack pole, yeah. You're pretty, yeah, it needs to be G E. Apparently you fell on fashion paths, millennium park.
I've known it as G E Field, but when I said millennium field, is it where that could add?
Yeah, exactly.
Want to step back to culverts a little bit.
Yes, I'm talking about that.
The driveway ones I'm talking about.
Well, I'm sorry?
How many permits do they give with driveways? If we're gonna get into a driveway issue.
How many permits are issued for?
Yeah, do you have to have permits for driveways?
Yes.
Okay, there's three driveways at this particular home. It's causing this water issue.
Ah?
Ah.
But I thought the one was causing it.
Well, one has a culvert and the culvert needs replacing. The other two don't have culverts, but they're kind of exacerbating the property owner's water issue.
The other two? What, three or whatever it is?
The other two.
The other two. But that wasn't the one that they were, they weren't looking for reimbursement.
Correct.
They have it.
They would've done that at their cost.
At their cost. It's the, only the one.
Right, the other most one, yes.
Well, I mean, I guess the question is, when were the other ones put in and if were they approved?
There's no culverts at the other two driveways, so.
So I don't know.
But if, if, if they were gonna put a culvert, they said that they were gonna take that on, that expense on. The only one that they didn't think that they had to or should have is the, the one.
Right.
The uphill one. I mean, I mean, like, like Caroline said, the water issue is caused by the two driveways.
Well, I'm not gonna, until they actually come in and talk to us.
Right, I mean, and, I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, well, good information to have, but I, I'm not gonna, I mean, we've already issued our answer and it's.
Right, and, and, but I'm, it's just saying, you know, it's not something that, I don't believe the town, it was causing that water issue.
Okay, well, that's good. It's the, okay, I'll leave it at that for now. Anything else for?
Did the ditch get cleaned up though?
Oh, did we?
Before it?
We haven't ditched it yet. We did some of it last fall on the upper part to try to get the water to flow and it stayed in there, and it was going through the culvert, but, I mean, the culvert's higher than their driveway, there's, there's a bump there, it's definitely. I mean, the water's gonna get to the heights before it goes through the bike, so.
Gotcha.
But, you know, I mean. The, the ditch beyond their yard has not been ditched in years, and that's, you know, that could eliminate some of the water issue, but if they don't do something to those driveways, you're gonna still have a water issue.
Gotcha. Okay, well, that's good, though. And if they come in and talk to us, we can, we can mention that, so.
Anything else with me?
Anything else for George, thanks?
No.
All right, well, thanks, George.
Okay, we got three culverts replaced on the slide already, so.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Cross culvert, so.
Yep.
Chris is gonna be sending you an email, they wanna take the gravel pot that we're buying off of that.
Yes, and I.
And have a new contract or something.
Yes, and I, I have that, it's in the board's folder, um, because the gravel is part of the contract.
Why don't we take care of it now and do a care of your questions and then you can explain it.
So, um, gravel doesn't really include labor, it's in the Pike contract, but it's really just, you know, Pike pricing.
Materials.
You know, because we're working with them this year, so they just wanted to make that a little bit more explicit and pull it out of the contract, so this is Pike pricing, um, both pages need signing.
Okay, so this is, um, again, just, um.
The first page is.
Recognizing that it's not, it doesn't include labor, this is the actual just product.
Right, it's pricing for product is the first page.
At, at a, at a reduced rate, at a contract.
You talked to him today?
No, he sent that email, no?
Another, it's got another email coming out to you. They don't like, Pike don't want that in the contract.
So it may be probably that what you all called bid two thousand nineteen dash one and two thousand nineteen dash two is probably gonna get rewritten and re-signed to exclude.
That will be.
Those.
These.
So this is a separate issue, so we're kind of doing two things.
All right, well, first of all, then, we need to sign off on the, on the separate, um, the stone.
So, right, this is just, you're gonna get the, um, the reduced per ton cost because we're working with Pike, that's the first page. The second page is a tax exempt certificate so that they're not charging us sales tax on.
And that's the only reason why we're getting it from them.
Cause it's coming over main.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Did they charge us anyways?
Is there any objection to me signing off on the, uh, on the additional contract for stone? It's, it's six hundred tons at ten dollars a ton, so it's six thousand.
That's the gravel.
Which was included in the.
Right.
So they'll come off the other two contracts.
Yeah, it's gonna come off the contracts because we're purchasing the gravel ourselves.
All right, why don't we do a motion, just in case? And I'm on one side, so it's not all over.
Okay, with your, your number here or now just say the stone?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't see one, but.
We've made up numbers to give.
You can just reference the date.
Yeah. Okay, make a motion that we accept the Pike's, uh, contract, quote, dated five two for the sum of six thousand dollars, which is for three-quarter inch crushed stone base.
Well, second that.
Okay, so move to second. If there's any other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, I'll sign. And I'm going to sign the second page unless there's objection to they don't charge us sales tax.
No, just.
I wouldn't imagine there'd be any, but, you know.
And just for that, they're gonna take it away on all the other stuff. The taxing, some things should take care of it.
Because their yard.
To my mind, it should take care of everything.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, but if you're a state and you have to.
But they shouldn't have ever, I think they've never charged us sales tax for paid though.
No, but they have, every time we go up and buy stuff, they won't, hopefully they'll agree to that exemption on all this stuff.
I would hope so.
Oh, you mean in general when you go?
Once you have a, once you have a tax exempt form, that usually applies to everything.
It should.
Yeah.
Um, they've been difficult, like, they're all diff, all the paving gravel places have been not very cooperative about that in the past, just because it requires paperwork and reworking their systems.
What's the industrial address here? Six what?
Oh, six, six, seven Main Street. Um, I anticipate it coming tomorrow. The board will sign all the paperwork tonight.
Ed Simon was, Bob is the one.
All right, so. Okay, so, we have, that's taken care of. All right, anything else for George tonight? Nope, okay. Well, thank you very much, George. Have a great night. All right, so while we're waiting for police and fire, we're gonna go through, probably go through some more of this, um, so. We've kept the C I P on there as a placeholder, the planning boards meeting tomorrow night, and I, uh, I'm hoping that our representative will get a name for us for next week. Hopefully someone will step up for the planning board and wanna be on it, so, thank you. And, all right, budget committee training, is there, is a purchase order somewhere?
There is.
In there? We asked Caroline to prepare one, so that. I wanna do this right now, we're gonna take care of it, so, um, you wanna move it and then we'll talk later.
All right, I'll move purchase order one, six, three, four to the New Hampshire Municipal Association for five hundred and fifty dollars for, um, basic law of budgeting training.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we had a request by members of the budget committee, right, that they wanted a, a training, and so we will offer it again, um, for them and for anyone else who's interested. So open up to all the other boards.
Yes.
In town.
Yep.
Yes.
Including our own, and we'll work with the planning board chair for, uh, and he can pull his membership and see what, uh, community time is based off of.
The budget committee chair.
Based off of, based on availability from the municipal association, right? So they'll give us X amount of dates.
Yes.
And they can vet it and see what works best for the members.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Purchase order sixteen, thirty-four, has been moved and seconded?
And where's the money coming from?
So, um, the training line is under personnel administration. It's gonna over expend that line.
Okay.
So contingency.
So, you know, contingency, you have other lines, um.
Okay, just, I'm not sure. I think next year we should put it in the budget.
Mike and I already talked about that. We need to, um, there's another training conversation coming up on the agenda, so, yes, we need to.
And all these trainings, which I think that there is value in them, and, 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 information is a good thing to have. But I wanna make sure they're all accounted for under that line, so we understand. So it looks like, oh, you know, you had, I'll say, two hundred dollars under, we spent seven hundred. But we know why, because there was this training, there was this, you know, there was.
And is it one officer, are we gonna go every year?
Right, so then you can make a decision next year as to how you want to proceed, how to say, okay, this was worthwhile, or no, we shouldn't be doing it again. Or it should be a, an annual, right? I mean, I would think you get enough members.
Potentially, it could be three every year.
So, it might make sense, but, I mean, you could have no turnover and maybe, I don't know, they'll do a refresher, whatever, but we'll figure that out when the time comes. Okay, any other discussion on the purchase order? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. So that one's taken care of. All right, put that note here. This is done, deal with that stuff afterwards. All right. Uh, spacings committee draft charge. This was from last week, right?
Yes, and so.
And I'm trying to remember what we asked for to look at.
So, the, the conversation morphed into talking about, um, hiring up police consulting firms, so.
We have that.
I did that, I looked into that, that's what your second page is there. That's kind of a synopsis of, um, I called three firms.
Uh-huh.
Um, one of them declined, and this is sort of a synopsis from the other two firms.
What they offer and.
What they offer and, and the cost associated.
Okay, so let's, we can talk about this and then chew it over and see what we, if we wanna move forward. So there's M R I. We'll evaluate number of incidents that happen, level of coverage, um, and, uh, level of coverage, we need to provide the appropriate staffing level, including officer patrolman ratio. They can evaluate the number of details we perform and substantiate how many persons we should have and or detail rate. Can provide some comments as to amount and kind of space needed for the police department. Okay, that's that company. Firm B, Public Safety Strategies, um, they analyze data to determine that, to staffing levels, whether we should regionalize, whether we should build a new building. If we should build a new building, they will use data from Stratford Regional Planning Commission and other sources, I'm assuming the county dispatch, right? To determine the best size for Rollinsford for the next thirty to fifty years based on projected growth and population. It's also important. Uh, PowerPoint summary of findings, and this firm may negate the need, uh, for, or highly reduce the scope of charge, so we can, this, wherever it went.
They're, they're two very different.
There's like a long realist of things we want, that's volunteer group to look at, and so we can reduce a lot of that, because this firm would then look at that, is that what this means?
That's basically the difference in the proposals, that the first firm will answer some specific questions.
Right.
And you can pick the questions, um, but they'll just, you know, they'll kind of trip over some other information while they're looking for what.
Right.
You're asking for, such as space needs, they're gonna go down there and look around, they'll notice the space and they'll provide feedback about that. But they're not, um, they're not evaluating data in the same way as the second firm. The benefit of the second firm is that they really look at the whole idea of the police station, what it does, how it's staffed.
Right.
Given Rollinsford, the number of incidents, how long they take, time of day, um, and Rollinsford's projected growth and where it is in the region. So, like, projected growth, not just within, not just with the growth that we've, um, seen over the past ten years or so, but also with the development pressure on Portsmouth and Dover that we're gonna be seeing, we are seeing and will continue to see. You know, what would that mean potentially for growth, so that if they determine it makes sense to build a new police station, um, what size should it be so that it's the right thing for decades to come?
Right.
So, you know, that's not to say you wouldn't want a committee that might help inform where you would put such a police station, or maybe whether or not it gets combined with a fire department or a town hall. But it at least gives you some data-based, objective information about, um, what is the size of a police station for the town, given its projected growth. So, all the information that it, it gives you is based on data and it, and it sort of looks at the whole picture.
But doesn't tell you anything about this building.
No, neither of them do.
Yeah, so that is still something that has to be investigated about how does, what. Comparing it to doing building new and, and what it will take to have this get brought up to code or whatever you wanna say in, in maintaining it here.
Right.
Cause that was pretty much what they were talking.
Right, so.
They were talking about doing.
So, to my mind, it provides a comprehensive answer to one option, which is, well, you know, it, while at the same time informing the other option, you know. Um, so in other words, it will help answer the question, has the, has the police department outgrown its space, and if so, what kind of space does it need? Um, it doesn't help answer whether or not this can be retrofitted and, you know, back to the Bandwell space needs report, you know, you can bump this building out in one way or the other. But you're right, it doesn't speak to what this building might need otherwise.
Right.
So it answers the police conversation, but it's not just about the police conversation, because we got into a town hall conversation.
Right. Well, yeah, it's so, but, um.
I wanna talk to Bob about some of those too, so when he comes in, so. We're gonna have to make a decision tonight, but, I mean, we should be talking to him about it as well, so. Right, I mean, he's the chief of police, so if we're talking about wanting to gather some of this separate information from an impartial source to help inform a decision, you know, we want him to be part of that conversation, I imagine. So, I looked at the two proposals, though, it seems like the second one seems to be more of what I was hoping for. Getting the information that I was talking about last week, so. What are the, what are the folks, what are, what are other comments about these two proposals? So you had three, you said, and the third one?
Declined.
Declined.
Okay, that's too bad. All right, so. Niles, what do you think?
I tend to agree that the, that Firm B is, is offering something a little, um, more comprehensive to what we're looking for. Are there other firms? I don't, so you contacted three, is it worth beating the bushes on finger?
For more, yeah.
I'm sure it's, it's time-consuming to.
Well, it is, um, it is. I can continue to look. Um, I think we're gonna get away from more local companies. You know, M R I was, is a New Hampshire-based company. Um, the second firm is a national company, but they have local offices, so.
In addition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, I think we're just gonna be looking further away, which may increase costs, but I can, I can look into it if there is, I guess, is there something else that you're, you're looking for, because?
No, um, no, there, I don't think there's anything that they're not offering here, it's just wanting to know what the options are.
When is the, um, timeframe that they think that from start to finish, completing the job? Does it give any idea?
Um, that's a really good question. Um, I would wanna clarify that with them, but I would get, like, I, I got the impression that it was, you know, a number of, a, a small number of weeks, not.
Yeah.
But, but it's about getting in their queue too.
True, true, but this one might be longer since it's a little more in depth than the first one, so.
Right, and in speaking with the second company, because it's database, it has a lot to do with what format the data is in, and whether it's in a workable format, or whether they have to transpose it into a workable format. So that will impact that as well, but I can ask them, um, both that question.
And do they both come in and do a presentation?
So, um.
Or just get a report?
You, you basically get a report, but the second firm, um, the PowerPoint summary is really a way to keep costs down.
Right.
Um, it, I did, I did send you an email with, um, a report that they did for Portsmouth, which was, um, I think about forty-six pages long or something like that, it was quite extensive. Well, I can, I can resend it.
Don't, no, I'm.
Okay, but, um. So, it's a case of, you can, you can answer more questions and you can get more information and you can get better, some, you know, reports, it, you know, it's gonna potentially affect costs.
Yep.
Um, so those costs are ballpark figures depending upon, um, how they can get data.
Right.
The second, the second firm, it's really about the data. So if data is easy, then maybe, you know, you can get some kind of better report within that same dollar amount. But I can certainly get more information about that.
How did we, did we hear back from the school board on the school's resource to, to help inform about this building?
I'm meeting with the superintendent and, um, Mr. Fortier on Thursday here, and so we're gonna discuss what it can offer and-
All right, perfect, actually.
Yeah.
All right. So we can sit on this stuff.
Because I really think that way, so it gives us-
You still need to, yes, I think, yes, no matter which way you move forward with this, we still need more information about this building.
So that conversation could also inform our decision on which firm, which scope we wanna go with, too, so.
Yeah.
So I'd like to wait to see how that conversation on Thursday goes, I think.
Okay.
Before I think more on this. Now, this is helpful, this is, see what the scope of services could be.
Yeah, um, but the scope of services, uh, you know, these are, this is kind of what they were talking about in terms of what, what they do and how they like to operate, but they're both very customizable.
That's good to know.
So it's up to the board to come up with specific questions, and then, you know, you can certainly tailor it to the questions that you want answered.
That's good to know, too. Okay. All good. So we can, uh-
And who would get the money for this?
That's a really good question. It always comes down to the money. So you have it in-
Contingency.
Yeah, you, you have it in contingency, you have it in health insurance, you, um, you probably have a good amount of it in some departments. So it's definitely there, it's about reallocating. And you and I probably oughta meet and have a rebudgeting.
Conversation anyway, so.
Yeah, just to sort of see where we at, and see where we know that we're gonna spend more money, and, um, where it might come from.
Yeah.
You know, not that we're really over anywhere, but just-
We're really good right now.
We're really in good shape.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but still, that-
But if we're gonna talk about other, other things that are gonna come up, we can talk about, um, where they're gonna come from and what that looks like.
Well, that'll also inform our decision as to whether or not we wanna move forward or not, so.
Sure.
I mean, this was, this is an idea to, you know, help justify, in my mind, whether or not we're going to be able to do something about moving folk down stairs. So, to me, knowledge is power, so. But if, if it's not, if it's not practical or plausible, then we just can't do it, but this is good information to have, so. All righty, so. EverSource proposal, so, um, I don't know what I wanna say about this. I'm not sure still exactly, um, where I come down on all of it, but it seems to me that, um, at the very least, the, um, the transfer station looks like it might be something we, we may be able to handle this year, and potentially a fire station, too. I don't know about, um, if we wanna move forward with, um, the town hall and, uh, the, the highway department, but, maybe I have it backwards, maybe the highway's the one and the fire wasn't, but still, it's-
On fire, did you read the note about the fire department that Caroline had sent out?
Was it today?
Um, it was first thing, I think tomorrow, this morning.
Yeah, I've been, I've been-
They have April fluorescent fixtures, um, which are becoming very difficult to find bulbs for, so, um, the chief's comment, when I saw him last week, was that he thought this was very timely and welcomed it, because otherwise, he's gonna be in a pickle.
Oh, okay, well, that's good to know, too. I'll vary his record, man.
So when you're saying that we could do one or two of them, which really, are you talking about doing it for funding it and not loaning it, not on a loan?
Yeah, so the transfer station, I think there are advantages to not doing the, the financing. What was it, nine hundred dollars?
Approximately.
So.
Yep. Nine, nine seventy-six.
So that one seemed to, to make sense with it, but, um, I don't know, they have the thing of, um, here to say.
Fire station is almost thirty-nine hundred, thirty-eight sixty-eight.
I keep the potential to have that somewhere in his budget, too.
Well, or you can just keep the existing electric rates and do it without any other program.
Right, that's true.
Which is true for all of them.
You wish you'd do it all then, in, in doing that. And then if you, you had money that was left over, you could probably do a loan without the money.
What I would, I, I'm not in, in opposition to that, Denise, at all. What I would like to do, though, is pass, we get it to the municipal association, and make sure this is something that we could do, if it's a, it's a multi-year contract, whether or not we're able to do this without the permission of the town meeting. I mean, I understand that you're gonna spend the money one way or another, because via up the rates, that doesn't, that doesn't change.
Yeah.
But you're still object, you're still subjecting, um, future boards-
You're still in a contract.
Obligating, not subjecting, obligating the town to, to something, so I would want to know if that's something we can actually do before we run further, yeah.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful to see the contractors' contract, because they, you know, we're only one of two towns that hasn't done this, so, you know, so my, my, my guess is it's, it's really workable, but, but what's the clause that allows it to be workable, or what's the mechanism?
Right, right, right. And it's also, I mean, the, the other towns may have gone through a normal questioning process and planned this back in, during the fire decisions.
Or maybe it requires timing.
Right, so I want, I wanna make sure that, um, we, um, we're doing it, we're gonna do it.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's do that, because if, if it is possible, I think we, we'd be foolish not to do it, but-
Yeah.
If, if we can do it with the, I mean, even, even in this, with this building, if it's the, the uncertainty, right, with whether or not what's gonna happen with this building, the, the one certainty is, you still have to pay for the lights to stay on. So, so-
Well, and if you were to not stay in the building, it, it would re, um, it would improve resale value, potentially.
Well, we need to figure out, though, if for some reason, if we, if the town decides that the town hall is not going to stay in, in its, you know, town hall, traditional town hall setting, um, what are our obligations under the contract, you know? Because the retrofitting of this building is based off of, uh, off of our paying the higher rate, or not the higher, the, the normal rate, right, not the reduced rate rate.
Well, so you've got-
Are we on the hook for pay, pay?
Well, so you've got two years and four months, and so it depends on when that would start, but, you know, it's, it's not like you're gonna be moving into something within that timeframe likely.
At that point, likely, right.
It doesn't start until-
So, worst-case scenario, you're gonna owe, you know, unless you sell this immediately, in which case, I would say, you owe the balance on a loan.
Right.
Otherwise, you're just continuing to pay the electric rate, even though you're not here.
But your loan is still only half of the cost, because EverSource takes up the other half. I mean, when you did it all, figured it out, it wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot of money, and I would suggest going to full, um-
Yeah, no, if, if the municipal association says it's fine to do this, then I think we'd be foolish not to do it, but, I mean-
Before the program stops.
Well, exactly, right. I mean, we're just gonna pay what-
Pay out of it, you know?
If we're just paying, if the return on investment, the, the highest one was two and a half years, wasn't it?
Approximately, yeah.
Two, something like that. If, yeah, and, it was, so we're just gonna be paying the regular rates that we've been, we would pay anyways, if we didn't do it. And then, we could enjoy a reduced rate after two and a half years, substantial savings to the town, so it would be foolish, in my mind, not to do it, but I wish this were something to have for residential houses.
Yeah.
But, you know, I understand why they don't, so. So you'll look into that, Ford?
I will do that.
Chief, for you back there? Come on up, we'll, we'll put you aside here.
Evening.
Evening, Dean.
Essential emails. Raffle?
Yes, I saw that before I came over tonight, yeah, thank you.
Make sure we-
I don't know why we thought that, um, it must be like liquor dance or something, that, that they have a dance license to use, or something like that?
Yes, yeah.
Not raffle dance.
Or certain amount of people, too, right, I think?
Yeah, I don't know, we were wrong, so we're happy to sign it.
They have a dance license they have to have, regardless if they have one person or five hundred people down there.
Oh, okay.
Just for the year. Uh, okay, the first item, invoice to Seco's Business Machines, it's number one-five-nine-seven. It's our annual service contract for the copier fax machine and the six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move purchase order fifteen-nine-seven to Seco's Business Machines for six hundred and fifty dollars for annual service contract.
One second.
All right, any questions?
That's actually twenty dollars higher than last year, so it's not that bad.
So, no questions? No questions? All right, so all those in favor of purchase order fifteen-nine-seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
First, purchase order number one-five-nine-nine to Two Way Communications. It's for the annual certification of our four radar units, and that's, uh, three hundred dollars. Not coming to our radio repair line, I don't know.
Motion to accept purchase order fifteen-nine-nine to Two Way Communications for the annual certification for the radar units for a total of three hundred dollars.
So second thought?
Any discussion of purchase order fifteen-nine-nine? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Good.
I don't know what else we have to stack of paper, I don't wanna jig those down.
And, and back in March eighteenth, the, uh, Mr. Rollins, Mr. England signed the approval of standards, we just need to get Denise's signature in that now, please, make it official. Uninformed with the last couple of times that we've sent out a alert through Nixal, it did not go through your SMS, it went directly to, uh, your email only. Uh, Nixal has, um, done away with a free service for the texting portion of the emergency alerts now. So I said, what's the price to include the, uh, the texting portion, and it's over five thousand dollars. And I said, for the, the amount of times that we use, it's just not worth it.
Right, right.
Having said that, the state of New Hampshire offers, uh, basically the same, uh, similar type of system, but it's free.
Oh.
For emergencies and non-emergencies. So, I have a contract here, uh, between the town of Rollinsford and the New Hampshire State Police Division Emergency Services and Communication, and just indicating that the select vote is designating myself as the primary point of contact for that. For the emergency contacts, I've listed myself, a lieutenant, and, uh, Officer Hancock. For the non-emergency contacts, listed those three, plus Caroline.
Okay. Any objections, anybody signing up on this?
No.
Are you able to move the whole, um, list of current subscribers?
No. So we'll have a transition, we'll send out a blast, an email blast, and, you know, one-on-one using Nixal in the future, you know, please sign up to the service.
So can you work with, um, Tia to get a link on the website and remove the network name?
Perfect. Five thousand dollars, wow.
Yeah. Just wanna make you aware of the fact that we had a resident that owes the, the town three hundred and thirty dollars in overdue dog fees.
Oh.
To, um, in on cash. We paid the bill last year.
Right.
We've submitted several invoices to her to reimburse us, and she loaned us off.
Okay.
So I wanna make you aware of the fact that we've now started a small claims action against her. It cost us ninety dollars, however, once, I anticipate we're gonna win, very, win in the district court, that, uh, she will then have to reimburse us the ninety dollars as well.
Okay.
Just to make you aware of that.
Perfect.
And the last item that I have for the board is, um, as I've spoken to you a couple of times over the last couple of months, I would like to promote Officer Hancock to Sergeant effective June third. He's well-qualified, he's an excellent judge for us thus far. He's in demand, I know at least, uh, two police chiefs had asked, is he happy, will he play in the field in the future? Uh, and I don't want him to stay here. So I have an, an official letter to the board requesting and recommending that we, we promote him to Sergeant effective June third.
So, I will accept a motion to, um, promote Officer William Hancock to the rank of Sergeant.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? I think that it's certainly well-deserved, and I agree, I'm hoping he will accept it and will stay with us, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, do I need to sign something on here, or, I don't think so, just a lot of asking us, right?
No, just asking.
So we'll save this for, I don't know, whatever. All right, we'll put it in the board's calendar.
And if we could schedule, uh, his promotion, I'd like to have the board present him with the sergeant badge, that might-
Do you want it at, um, a full board meeting? We're coming to see you all on the fourteenth, do you want it in front of all the other members of the department, or whatever's better? His family would probably like to be there, right?
Yeah.
Maybe do it on Monday, next Monday?
Oh, Monday night, yeah.
Or whatever you have.
It's probably the best thing, yeah.
So on June third, that's Monday night.
Yeah, June-
Oh, June third, I don't know why I said next, the, the fourteenth, because it's right there on the third. All right, so let's do it on that day? Fine, let me, I'll, I'll, now that I've said that, hold on.
Six-thirty?
Denise, you're gonna be promoting, um, Officer Hancock, 'cause I'm gonna be a beautiful soul, actually.
Oh.
It may be beautiful, I don't know, I've never been there. I'm not leaving the airport, I've got a meeting for three days at the airport.
Pretty far from done.
I have no idea, I've never been there, I'm not going into it either, so. Joy, joy, so, sorry, but yeah. Full endorsement.
That's all that I have for you folks, anything for me?
We have a non-public, right? But before that, so I've, maybe over to Ken Moore's, I don't know, but, um, as part of the, um, we started working on the, the charge for the space needs committee, reconstituting this, and, and the list got longer and longer and longer, and more technical, I think. Certain questions, I mean, I have to go back and look at it, but in my mind, there were other questions about building size, staffing levels, people were asking, well, why does Rollinsford have so many cruisers? You only have one person on at a time. All these different questions. Why do you need a new town, why would you not be able to stay down there, you only have one person on at night, all these different things. I said, why are we not hiring a consultant firm to come in and look at? We're a town that hasn't grown very large in the last, roughly, I don't know, fifty years, more than that, maybe. We are a town that has a diverse village aspect, there's all these different aspects, and I don't know how to answer these questions. Why are we not hiring a firm to look at some of this and to inform, so when there are potential naysayers saying, we don't need a police station, these are the reasons why? Or, maybe it's, maybe it is to the commerce, I don't think it would be, but maybe it would be, you don't need a police station, but there, there's no, we haven't had an outside agency or, or firm come in and tell us what we need or what we don't need. And that was part of the hiccup last time, too, people questioned, well, what are the motivations? Why do you have, think you have to do this now? All this stuff that, that, it's hard to answer some of these questions without having actual concrete data in front of us. So we're, I don't want you to think we're doing this behind your back, I mean, we're doing it in a meeting, anyway, we're talking about it, but, um, it was maybe just a harebrained idea that I thought, came up with last week, I don't know, but it's something we're talking about and we're considering. We haven't made any decisions yet, um, but I want you to know that there's something we're considering, and they would be working with you and your officers to talk about this stuff, so, well, I'm assuming that that's why we, we have to come up with questions and things, so, maybe not. We may decide in the end that it's not worth the money, I don't know, but I also do want you to know that we're talking about this.
Yeah.
I don't want you to, you know, rumor sometimes festers into fact in this town when people start, little birds start chirping, and we haven't actually had the real conversations, so, so we are talking about that. It may not happen, so, but it's something we're looking at. And we're going to have, um, have another conversation about this building we're in. And we're going to have, I have another conversation about this building we're in. I mean, I could inform part of the conversation, too. The downstairs certainly won't inform the upstairs. And we're having Mr. Fourier, the superintendent, have a conversation with Caroline, see if he can even lend some of his expertise to look at some of the issues that may be going on with this building. Whether or not it makes sense to fix any of them, or maybe we're overblowing or overstating something, I don't know. I'm not a facilities expert, he is. So, that's going to inform part of our conversation, too. But anyways, I wanted you to know that, inherit from me, it was my harebrained idea, so. I didn't want you to, and I think we, we started talking about it long after, it was a very long night last week, so. I don't want to believe we're any more than a half, but we need to go to non-public to talk about a personnel issue with you again, I think, so. So, do you have anything else that you want to talk to us in public?
I'm sorry.
There anything else for the chief on public? Okay, so let's do a motion to go to non-public for a personnel issue?
Motion to go to non-public for personnel issue.
Second?
Okay, roll call Denise?
Yes.
Miles? Yes.
Yes, we're in non-public to deal with personnel. It is nine, seven fifty-eight. I promise we're going to get you out of here in time. Eight fifty.
We've got an hour, where's, like, I think, to, like, oh.
We have a lot more to talk. Really? Holy moly. Good thing you're retired, huh? And you're not going on vacation anywhere. Alright, we're back. I assume you're not, you're not now, I guess. Alright, we are back from the non-public. Next thing we have is code enforcement workshop. It's my understanding that Mr. Clark would like to go to training with the municipal association for code enforcement?
And so the cost of that is sixty dollars. It's under the purchase order limit, but I'm bringing it to you because it's never been budgeted for him to go to training before, but I think it would be beneficial for him to go.
And buy it for the town.
Yes, so it's, you know, I'm sure we can absorb it, I just wanted to bring it to you.
Is there any objection?
No.
Alright, then it's below the threshold, so. Thanks for learning. Appointment, so tree warden and fence viewer. We've had interest in both. Mr. Sherpinter apologizes, he did not see the notice that went out, he apologizes for that. But he is interested in staying on as tree warden, if we're interested in keeping him. And so, we have interest from Mr. Hensman also, right? Who responded? I wonder if he's interested in the fence viewer?
Yes, I'm sure he would.
Okay. It could be a simple thing.
I move we appoint head sherpenters as tree warden and John Hensman to fence viewer.
I'll second that.
Well, that's a simple thing. Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Alright, well, that was the simplest thing I've ever done, fine. You might just make it on time. Employee recognition dinner, so we're waiting to hear back, one more piece of information from the school. We're going to see the.
I will see them, so they may be going to ask that question.
So, that's fine, we will hold on. So, but if we don't have that information by next Monday, I'm going to suggest we reach out to the fire station and see if Mark doesn't mind us going in there and using his kitchen. Just doing it there, if we don't have all the info from the school.
What are you looking for, for the downstairs, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, we need to know if we have one of their staff members there, and do another question we had, right?
Well, if they require that their staff person is there for the kitchen, does that come with a cost?
Right, well, clearly.
And he thought not, but he was going to check, so.
And custodian, too?
No, we're, it's otherwise free of charge, the only question is the kitchen.
Okay, alright, well, so we'll wait to find out about that, then. I think we still, I don't want to go much further than next week without a decision, because we're going to start planning and getting the word out to the employees, so. That this is happening, and other decisions we need to make, like who we're recognizing, like that, so. And what we're recognizing them for and all that, so. It's a new, new process, so we'll need to figure that out. So gas expansion in Rollins, Unitil's coming here next Tu- yeah, they're coming Tuesday. So, next Monday, the thirteenth, to have a conversation with us about their process and why they're asking for it, and where they want to expand and all that. Then we can decide whether or not we want to. A letter of support to the PUC. Did we find out about aye? Did you, did we vote on that one?
It was discussed last night, but there was not a decision. It was tabled.
So we discussed last week about whether or not it made sense to keep the expiration dates on the building permits? I mean, maybe I'm the one who said, let's wait, I don't remember, but. I mean, I have been going back and forth with this all week. And as the guy that, for a number of years, actually filled them out for, I don't know, it fell on, lots of things fall, it used to fall on the junior board of the board, and you just sort of got stuck with it. And I guess I just kept it, I don't know, but it's arbitrary in a lot of cases.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that's, that's the point, it's, I thought more and more about it, I thought, well, maybe it does make sense that we control that, but it's really arbitrary. In some cases, we gave them a whole year, in some cases, we gave them six months. Depending on what type of permit it was, if we thought that, like, if the work had already been done in some cases, I mean, it was, really, it was all very arbitrary. So if it can be more uniform this way, and it's easier to keep track of the permits, then we actually know what's going on, in my mind, it's better to do that. We actually know what they're doing, but, or not doing.
So what is it required?
So, so, so the conversation point is that expiration dates are in the building code. So we don't need to have any other regulation, you don't really need to set a building, an expiration date. If you do not set an expiration date, it defaults to the building code, which says that upon approval, you need to start your project within six months. And you need to be working on it continuously without lapsing for more than six months. And it really doesn't expire as long as you adhere to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So like, large, I mean, small projects is not going to matter. Like, large projects, like, Blueen over here?
Yeah. He could have several extensions on that, but the.
And I'm assuming he needs to come back in to get an extension of his existing building permit, because they haven't actually adopted this yet.
So, what would happen if it expired? Would you have to pay the fee again?
Right now, currently, the way it's happened is that they could pay an extra administrative fee, you know, if, I mean, there is some discretion with it, because there's not a policy. So if you're close to expiration and you just need, you know, two more weeks, you could probably work with a building inspector. If you are way past expiration, you're probably getting a whole new building permit, potentially, even.
We've had, we've had both cases, Denise, passports have just said, okay, well, fair enough, it was an honest mistake, you're still working on it, here, here's a six-month extension, or whatever time you need. And some boards have said, well, clearly, you haven't done anything in X amount of months you've been over for, you gave it here for a year, why didn't you do anything? You need to make a new application, so. Like, there was a pool house or something down on Sligo Road, and we, did we extend it? Did we make them come back? I mean, so there was, it happens, not frequently, but, you know, it does happen, so.
It is a little more consistent that it's in the hands of one employee now, rather than a board that changes more, and so that's good, but there really isn't a policy about it. So, where there's not a policy about it, you could default to building code, and that's at least, you know, an ad hoc policy.
Well, there's the state building code, which is consistent, which is a positive thing, I would imagine.
Yeah, I don't think we should be overriding the building code. Like, if it's there in the building code.
Well, you can.
Yeah, the right to.
Yeah, you have the right to, if it makes sense and you want to.
I agree with Mike that it's, unless we have some more concrete guidelines, six months for a small, a year for a large, then it's arbitrary, and, you know, we're just causing the permittee more problems.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Well, and it creates more administrative oversight. It creates inefficiencies in having to.
Yeah, it's good to chasing down different permits, and so it's moving, I don't know. It's making more, I think, about it makes more and more sense to do this, so it follows the state building code, but. Again, we're authorized to do it the way we want to do it, so we don't have to make any changes. We could just say, nope, pass, and just scratch it off, that's what we want to do.
Tom is asking, do we make this change?
Correct, yes.
Yep, I think it makes sense.
Denise, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's fine.
Okay, so let's have a motion to, to, let's see, to follow the, to change the building permit expiration dates to follow state building code protocols.
So.
There you go.
Did you sec- did you do it?
Yes.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Alright, so hopefully bring a little more consistency to that process, we hope. If not, we can revisit it, so. Policy review, does anyone want to discuss the three tonight? Eventually we're going to have to, so. But what I would suggest, I think I maybe did before, is having an abbreviated meeting on a Monday night, like, just say, okay, the first half an hour will be, will be department head. Issues, if you have issues, I need to come before the board, bring them in tonight, and we'll do POs, whatever you need to do. And then we take the next hour and a half, or whatever we want to take, and we start working through to one of the three.
Set a date to do that?
That would be fine by me, so we can actually, so we don't have to table them. We can actually start working on them, that makes sense to me. Well, I've only just got eight new invites for our work meetings, can't wait. Alright, let's see, let's make this meeting work before I accept anyone. Alright, so we have, next week, we have. Unitil coming in, so that's pretty much, oh, because they're coming at seven, right? So we could start the, we could start the twentieth if we wanted to. We cannot do the twenty-seventh, because it's a holiday, and hopefully, we're not coming in that night. So if we want to, we'll let all the department heads know, obviously, they'll know that the twenty-seventh is Memorial Day, we're not coming in. So the first half an hour of the meeting, unless, you know, they can't make it in, then they can, they can come in early, or they can just leave the purchase order with us, and we can take it up in the folder, but. So, we will have a regular meeting start at six-thirty and end at seven, and then for the next hour, maybe hour and a half, we'll go till eight-thirty. We'll work on whichever one we want to work on.
Sounds good.
And that's on the twentieth?
Yep.
Are we going to have anything to, like, get us going?
I will get you something, yes, absolutely.
So why don't we now make that decision? Do we want to work on welfare personnel or purchasing?
I'm having, I'm in a standstill, waiting for templates from Prime X's contracted attorney for the employee handbook.
I'm not going to do that, though.
Well, actually, I'm hoping that I can squeeze that one a little harder and get that one to flow, because that's the one that I would prefer.
Go on, start with that one?
But if that one doesn't work out, then I would suggest that we go to purchasing.
Okay, so will you ensure then that we have those materials?
Yes, I will, absolutely.
Timely, like, a week or so ahead?
So you can read over them, absolutely.
So you're comfortable with what you would be with the fraud stuff, that you handle welfare already?
Um, I'm not saying that, I'm, well, I'm not saying that either.
The priority view would be the personnel first?
Welfare's going to ultimately have to go through legal review. There is some minor revision that can happen in-house, but it's really on me to create the table of, it's going to take some work on my part before it gets to that point. So, you know, it's kind of, because we have a good base now, I think it can wait, and I would rather prioritize the others, I guess, is what I'm saying. The personnel has a lot of subsections, and I'm hoping that we can knock some of them off pretty quickly. And they should be fairly small and pretty quick, I'm hoping.
Make sure, just make sure you get us that information.
Yes, absolutely.
So then, it's not sitting here, and I'm getting a read-through first, and then?
No, no, I won't do that, so.
Alrighty, everyone's okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, town administration, standing items. Board member activities. Denise, you want to go first, or?
Yep, we have a, Carolyn and I will be doing rec interviews tomorrow night.
Oh, nice.
And Wednesday night, I have budget committee.
Okay.
I think that's it.
That's it?
Yeah, I think that's it.
So is there a planning board meeting tomorrow night?
There is a planning board meeting tomorrow night.
So I will go as ex officio?
Perfect.
Really?
Well, you can't, you're, you're doing rec.
Oh, no, she's.
No, no, I'm going to do them earlier.
It's going to be before that.
Oh, okay.
But if you, I mean, if you're having an interest and want to sit in, by all means.
No, I was planning to come anyway, but, I mean, I can, I can certainly serve as ex officio if you want the night off.
That's very kind of you. No, I don't mind going. John Krebs provided a technical review for a conditionally used permit for an accessory dwelling unit on Clement Road.
Oh, okay.
And then otherwise.
On Clement Road, where?
Woods of Year.
The, the large house on the corner of?
No, it's the red one.
Oh, right, they moved.
The new building one.
Yeah.
They used to have that house.
The red, that was part of the Goldenberg subdivision, that's not in the subdivision, but like, not in.
Whatever, they go through the process, they go through it, okay.
So, so there's that, and picking a CIP person.
Yes, please, for that.
Yes, so no stormwater on Wednesday?
There is no stormwater, there was confusion about that, and I'm not sure why there was confusion about that, but I need to tell the other members, because I think everybody understood that.
That was on my calendar.
Yeah, and so I'm not sure what happened with that, but.
You had a mini one tonight? We did have a mini one tonight, but.
Yeah, rec is meeting Wednesday night, too.
So I gave up the room for them. So I will reach out to them and let them know.
And I have a historical committee meeting on Thursday night, and lots to share with them for earlier conversations.
So all of you with your committees, it's not too late if anybody wants to submit committee-approved content for the newsletter, for anything happening between June and February.
The chair of the historical committee wrote a very nice one. Actually, I'm not being flippant, he wrote a very nice one. And then we all came to realize that it goes out with the tax bills, and the events that he was describing in this very nice update will have already happened, so we can't ask people to show up to them, so.
But I might suggest that if your committee wants to, that maybe it could go out as an email to the residents, it's just an update about what the story relates up to.
That is definitely, it's going to be on Facebook and stuff like that, so that's going to happen.
That's good.
We're excited, because we thought we'd be able to be included.
I don't want to.
It's not going to happen, because all the things have already happened, so.
But I wouldn't want the work to go for naught, because it was nice that they did it that.
Yeah, no, 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 we're going to have Tia send it out, so.
Good.
I think that she did know already, I think she might already, I don't know. Okay. That's it. Okay. Oh, town administrator, what's your update?
Well, we talked about a lot of it already, I'm going to, I'm going to meet with the superintendent and the facilities director on Thursday and talk about what they feel they can offer about assessing this building and its needs and its costs, and perhaps a plan. So I will report back about that. Stormwater got rescheduled, but in the meantime, Paul and I will be still working on making sure we keep things moving for the next meeting. You have in the Manila folder over there, it is the season of exemptions and credits and abatements. So those are veteran credits, and on the bottom, one elderly exemption application. The top, they all have little signature tabs, so you can see that they all need to be signed. Right above that, they say that they do or don't qualify and why. There's one veteran credit that does not qualify, the others do. The elderly exemption does not qualify, it exceeds income limits.
Where is it?
Well, you can, you can.
So they've been reviewed?
So Chad has, Chad has reviewed them, made his recommendations, he's still reviewing abatement applications, a lot of them still have to do, are.
Do we need to do the veteran's tax credits and the elderly numbers tonight?
They do not have to be tonight, but they should happen soon, so if not tonight.
So in the past, we met in non-public to discuss the merits of each of them, and then.
You certainly could, there are four.
Do we need to do, my question is, do we need to do that this time? Because the last time we did this was like a full review.
Well, right, that was an audit.
An audit, right.
Yeah, that was the internal audit, and we did all of them, and that's not what this is. These are new applications, but by all means, if you want to discuss them and discuss what qualification standards are and the ways in which they did or did not meet them, we can certainly go over that. It's a, it's a good learning experience, but it does take time. So that's up to the board. Happy to do it. But like I said, they don't need to be.
They don't need to be.
But they should happen next week at the latest, because they need to, they should be reflected before the.
We can just sign off on them now, that if people are ready, because they can look at them. And we can sign, so there's nothing controversial, they've been reviewed by Chad, and.
Right.
We had to review each of them individually before they went on, that is the difference. I just want to make sure people understand that, there's a difference in the process. Either the normal applications that come in, there's a normal process, Chad reviews them, we sign off on them. When we do it, the state requires us to do an audit every five years, ten years?
At least once in every, at least once in every five years, which, by the way, we would like to do more frequently.
So that's a deeper dive, I mean, you know, like, so, there are reasons why people could no longer qualify, you know? So surviving spouses, getting remarried.
Well, and people die, and the adult children try to benefit, and don't qualify. So, by all means, if you have any questions about why they, about what the note says, about why they did or didn't qualify, we can hold off and discuss it. The veteran credit is very specific about ninety days of service and certain times. The veteran credit is very specific about ninety days of service, certain timeframes, and medals for certain terms of service. The elderly exemption is about proving income and asset limits. So on the two-thirds of the way down on your left, in your left hand, you'll see.
Oh, I see, is it, I'm just looking at the, this, this, this is the one that did not qualify. Doesn't have, doesn't have ninety days of, oh, but.
Has a lot of service, but not ninety days and the medals.
In a qualified period.
Yeah.
So, and the qualifying period is on here, or used to be on the application, so people understood what they needed.
I think it just references the RSA, which is very specific.
Maybe we, maybe we just printed it out before then.
Yeah.
So we understood what the, what the qualifying service dates were.
And I can do that if you.
Well, I mean, Chad has reviewed it, and so he, so here's the question. Do people want to meet in non-public next week? To discuss these individually, or are you satisfied with just taking Chad's recommendation?
It seems like there might be some, it might be worthy of discussion.
Yeah. Kidoki, we will do it next weekend. Alright, what else is in your little red folder?
We have a letter from the Department of Financial Services, a wetlands permit that I imagine has been granted to Kevin and Sylvia Roden of.